Call meeting to honor, roll call Alderman.
Heisler.
Here.
Consoa.
Here.
Meyer.
Here.
Paul.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Regowitz.
Here.
Carpenter.
Here.
Hart.
Here.
Selsby.
Here.
Hayden.
Here.
Seibert.
Here.
Martinson.
Here.
Elmore.
Here.
Schneider.
Here.
Musgrove.
Here.
Arlen.
Here.
Roll call apartment heads.
Police Chief Clay.
He's excused.
Our Chief Weinstein.
Here.
Robert Sprague.
Here.
Kenton.
Paul's excused.
Royce Perlass.
Here.
Jamie Metruch.
Here.
Tim Regowitz.
Here.
Jim Schneider.
Here.
Leander Spearman.
Here.
Emily Foltz.
Here.
Chuck Shaver.
Here.
This time ladies and gentlemen, would you please stand and join in flessing.
The living to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we do not have a public hearing this evening, at this time I will propose anticipation. If anyone would like to address the council, please step up to the microphone, give your name and address as soon as possible. Is there anyone this evening?
Through 18th St., 29th Street, Delville. When Delila was here was paint the town. I think Delila would be a little bit disappointed in Delville that I don't think that Alderman or anybody else in town has had a new idea in 20 years. I was thinking possibly, there's abandoned houses and abandoned buildings all over Delville. People are leaving this town not to live. And I don't think if a person wants to have a few chickens or a couple of goats in his backyard and he's got a fence, then the neighbors going, "I don't see where that would be a problem." I'm sure nobody's going to run off and leave their, uh, leave town on the side of a couple of chickens or goats. Uh, they're right next to my house, there's two abandoned houses that have been abandoned for at least two years. And I don't think, uh, I don't know what caused it, let's believe, but, uh, I think, uh, if a person's got an appropriate yard, I don't see no problem to have a few chickens or goats or something to clean up, you know, to clean up the bugs and keep the grass down and whatnot. Okay, I can.
All righty. Anyone else this evening? During now, I would close public anticipation. This time we will go into, uh, appointments and, uh, first appointment is we need, I'm asking for a motion to approve the appointment of Tricia Tialdo to the Health and Housing Committee. Tricia, as you saw in your packet, is a, um, Realtor and we have it in our ordinance that the Realtor Board, um, may have a seat on this committee. We did have so many years, um, several different Realtors and then for a while they struggled with giving us a name that, uh, of interest and they came to me recently, so. Uh, you have a brief little, uh, professional biography on Tricia and, um, she does work with her mom and dad and she's got a really good community and, uh, you got a little bit about her there, so. I would ask for a motion to, uh, fill that vacancy on the Health and Housing Committee. Motion by Alderman Consoa. Second by Alderman Heisler. Is there any discussion, yes, sir?
Would you clarify, is this a whole unit or a...?
Yes. We added approximately, oh, I want to say 10, 15 years ago, two spots on the Health and Housing Committee, uh, and I talked to John Langman because they haven't had a spot there for a while, but in fact, what used to be the greater economic, greater level of economic progress and the, and the, and the Realtor Board each had a spot on this committee. It was kind of usual with housing was of great interest to both those groups and the City Council had adopted that in the ordinance. I don't have the ordinance in front of me, but it's probably was 97, 98, something like that, that that was adopted. We have filled that position many of the years, but in recent years, uh, the groups didn't have people who lived in Delville who were interested in serving. Uh, John, John Langman is telling me he's working on, he has a possibility of someone who just took from the Chamber Board now to serve and this young lady has come forward and, uh, oh, we've had a Realtor on there, I think, most of the time. We just had one just about a year ago that was on there. We've almost always had a Realtor.
What, are they headed to...
No, I think this was probably it. It was just because of the, um, housing, um, the interest of the Chamber and of the Realtor Board, um, years ago that we agreed to include, uh, each of those two bodies. It's been part of, uh, like I said, probably close to 15 years. Okay? So we have a motion and we have a second. I'd ask for a roll call, both of her tenants.
Heisler.
Aye.
Consoa.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Paul. Um, Anderson.
Aye.
Regowitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Selsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlen.
Motion carries. At this time, I'd ask for a motion to appoint, uh, Tom Peters as the public member for nominating the Joint Review Board's annual meetings for TIFs 10 through 21 to be held on February 24th, 2012. I motion Alderman Meyer, second by Alderman Seibert. Any discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Consoa.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Paul.
No.
Anderson.
Aye.
Regowitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Selsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
No.
Seibert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
No.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlen.
Motion carries. This time we go to reading of the minutes. First of all, we have amended pages seven and nine of the January 17th, 2012 regular city council meeting events, per Alderman Holt's request. Mrs. Seibert, do you want to explain the ready explanation of that there?
Uh, I didn't hear what you said and I gave you a copy of the...
Yeah, I understand what you did.
Did you hear it? Oh, I mean, you didn't hear what you were looking for. Okay.
So was there some amendment or two?
Yes, yes.
So we have a few, are we here a motion to, uh, those amendments? Motion by Alderman Silber, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Meyer, do I hear any discussion? All in favor of accepting the amendments as explained, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. We have the minutes of the regular city council meeting events held February 6th, 2012, with your pleasure.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to approve or file the minutes.
We have motion by Alderman Heisler, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Carpenter, do I hear discussion? All in favor of accepting the minutes and having them filed, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Claims payable or disbursements.
Yes, Your Honor, we have the claims payable or disbursements we made.
Motion by Alderman Anderson, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Meyer, do I hear discussion?
May I ask a question? Um, on the police department, we have emergency board and milsac for $200,000 and $38,000. Did Hockenburg not have what we needed that we went out of town?
From what I know with talking to the police department, they always used to go to Hockenburg and there was some stuff that should have been government warranty that Hockenburg was covering and there was, um, it went there to get a full emergency board and milsac and almost everything came in cheaper than Hockenburg. So they started using emergency boards.
We will do everything we can to work in Delville, but sometimes if we can't get the parts to service or the, or the price, we'll have to, this economy shot, so there's an answer, I'm sure.
Well, I don't want to ask.
Yeah, no, okay. So we have a motion, a second to pay the claims. Any other further discussion or questions? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Consoa.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Regowitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Selsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlen.
Aye.
Motion carries. Treasurers report the city of Delville funds and statement of cash and investments for January 2012, with your pleasure.
I'd like to make the motion, Your Honor, to accept and support and file.
Motion by Alderman Heisler, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Bruce, do I hear discussion? All in favor of accepting the Treasurers' reporting, have it filed for audit, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All, motion carries. All reports, uh, Alderman Heisler.
Yes, Your Honor. On behalf of the Traffic Committee, uh, I'd like to delete the two-hour limited parking under schedule G for the South 16th Street, both sides from West Main Street to the railroad tracks and have the proper ordinance drawn.
You have motion by Alderman Heisler, second by Alderman Hayden to approve, uh, that request from the Traffic Committee. Any discussion? All in favor of, uh, that motion and have the proper ordinance drawn, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Alderman Heisler. Yes.
I've got a question. Uh, there's two recommendations passed by, uh, Traffic Committee, I don't see one...
The other one was not put on the agenda because the owner of the property was never notified and we can't vote a change for his property without the owner, owner, owner of the property agreeing to a change. We were asking for, he was asking for a curb cut and the owner of the property, aren't we also, the other thing we asked in lieu of that was a contract from that gentleman showing us a contract, that he had a contract on the property for his request. That would be like me requesting to zone your property, because you're the property owner and you don't know anything about it. The owner has to have, so we're waiting, we're, Elmore's in the process of contacting him and, and until we hear from that owner, it's not appropriate that somebody else comes along and wants to make a change on somebody's property without them knowing it.
I understand.
So it was tabled. It was not put on the agenda for that reason.
Should, should, should we have that kind of checks and balances so they don't even get on the committee?
Well, it's going to go back to the committee. It's going to, it's going to go, it'll go on the agenda of the council. That man contacts us and says, "But at this point, when we ask some questions, uh, the man who owns the property had not given us permission to even make a change to his property." So that's why I held it up on the agenda. And we tried, we tried to get ahold of him a couple times. So as soon as we get ahold of him, it'll be on the next time. Okay?
How do, do you...
A man who, a man who's looking at purchasing this property requested the change, but, but the man who actually owns the property didn't come forward, didn't acknowledge and didn't give us permission to authorize this request to change.
Okay, the committee, when they were making that decision, did not have that information, that the owner...
Well, I don't know if it wasn't asked or didn't have the information or whatever, but, but when I asked the question of staff, staff said, "No, the owner doesn't know about him." They said, "Get ahold of the owner." The owner could never easily be contacted, so therefore I held it. We had to make a decision late Thursday about the agenda and I held it off at that point.
At the, uh, meeting, Traffic Committee, who, that never came up in any way.
I guess we should have said in the first...
We assumed, when I asked the questions, uh, with staff, we had to, had to put ahold of it. Okay, so we have a motion, uh, and a second to approve, uh, well, we did, okay, wait a minute, let's back down. We did that, we answered, answered your question. Now we're on Heisler for Finance. My...
Yes. Your Honor, on behalf of the Finance Committee, I'd like to make the motion to reduce the Oktoberfest Committee's payment for city services at their 2011 event to $7,500 and explore looking into developing guidelines or a policy for future events. So move, Your Honor.
Second. Motion by Alderman Heisler, second by Alderman Carpenter. Um, discussion. Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Consoa.
Aye.
Meyer. I'm sorry. Aye. Paul. Um, Anderson.
Aye.
Regowitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Selsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider. Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlen.
In request to the second part of the developing of guideline of policy, I will have the administration's guideline, um, typed into you the next few days ahead.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, but we directed the, this group, the council, to direct that to go to the police and fire committee.
I'll have it to the police and fire, that's who wants to discuss it, but ultimately it's got to go to finance.
Yes, sir. We had already set it in motion and because you...
What I'm saying is, we have had a guideline we've been following for the administration for a number of years. I will have...
Is it a written guideline? Is it a...
You will, you will have a copy of it. I didn't have time today, but you will have a copy of it before the next committee meetings or as soon as I can distribute it.
Sir, it passed this at the first meeting in January and it was supposed to go to the police and fire. When I attended the police and fire, I was told by the chair of that committee that you had requested it yourself to take that off the agenda.
I told them, I would get it, I would tell them I would get it written and that Jamie and I would go through what we had, what the administration has been doing.
And it's clear that she does have the figures. I mean, no, she does.
And then I, and I, we will have the explanation and you guys can discuss it at that point and all the written aspects of it, what we've been doing for the last several years. And then you can, you know, and it'll be there at that committee or before. I have it here before. I didn't have a chance to have it at the last, uh, committee meeting, it just, uh, it was one of those things that just didn't get done and I apologize.
And yet, I know, sir, that we have resolutions here trying to push your way through with at those particular events being subject to this discussion.
Well, these are ongoing, that've been going on this way for many years.
Yes, sir, and those are what we would like to talk about. That should have been logged before committee, when you were attempting to circumnavigate the system.
No, there's no attempt to do that. We're, we're moving forward.
Mr. Mayor, when the council directs the committee to discuss it and you direct the committee head to not discuss it.
No, I, I simply said, I didn't have a chance yet to get the written, our written details presented at that meeting. I, you know, and that was my, my mistake for not having the time to get it together. But, um, you can, you have, you have a right to, if there's something here tonight that you're, I don't know what you're talking about specifically. Right now, we have a motion that we did see, we already, did we take the roll call?
Yes, I did.
We took it and it passed, right?
Yes.
Okay, so at this time, uh, I'm just simply saying we'll have a written policy of the administration's been doing on the guidelines by, you'll have it by the first of March, uh, which will be before the next committee meeting. At this time, I ask for a motion to approve a proposal from Carl Hodison for services as a labor consul for proposed billing rate of $220 per hour and travel expenses to be reimbursed by the city of Delville. And this isn't pertaining to the current police contract that's, uh, being, uh, being discussed, uh, and also the upcoming fire contract.
Okay, sir, this proposal contains no...
Let's first of all, get a motion on the floor to discuss it.
I motioned we postpone the discussion of this executive session. It's about, um, union labor discussions.
Um, if you, is the council would like to discuss it in general executive session? I will, uh, as the chair of the committee in the meeting here tonight, I will just arbitrarily agree to take it to executive session since it's about union negotiations and then we'll put it back on the agenda at the time of the meeting and I think I have the authority to do that, so we will just do that. Moving on to D. At this time, I had a motion to authorize the mayor to prepare a letter of approval for the Violence Prevention Center in southwest Illinois to send along with their grant proposal to the L.R. Department of Commerce and Economic Development Emergency Shelter Grant. Do I hear a motion?
Aye.
Motion by Alderman Meyer, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Seibert, discussion.
Would you lay that a little bit more forward for the letter of approval?
This is the lady who's the executive director of the Violence Prevention. Yes, would you stand up, please?
Sure. I'm Darlene Jones.
Darlene, I'll tell you what, for your sake, if you're not on the tape, can you come up to the microphone?
Sure. Hi. You're with me, I'm going, losing my voice. Um, I, it's something that I'm not familiar with, but apparently it's, all it is, is a statement that says that the mayor gives his approval for us to do whatever we're trying to do with the grant money. What we're looking at is, uh, we need a new roof. It's on 605 East Main. It's an old building, we just need a new roof and we're asking for just under $50,000, we have to match it. And apparently, if you've had this grant money in the past, you don't have to get a letter of approval from the mayor, but this is the first time that we've done it.
This is not the first time for several other agencies.
Correct.
At this time, I, we've had to endorse and give letters of support before.
Okay, so are we helping with the grant money? Or just...
It's just...
Something on your checklist you have to do.
It's just on the checklist, you know, they have you jump through a lot of hoops and you can jump.
It's basically to make sure that the...
Absolutely.
It's to make sure that they acknowledge that the community's well aware what's going on there and that they're applying for these funds and using them in, you know, and, and we're very appreciative of the Violence Prevention Shelter. So I would ask for most...
So you're, this thing is just kind of acting like an authority saying, "Yes, these are legitimate roof, yes, they're..."
That's exactly what I'm hearing.
Okay, got it, got it. Thank you.
So we have a motion and we have a second. All in favor of, uh, authorizing the mayor to prepare a letter of approval, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Uh, ask for a motion at this time to approve the closing of East Main Street on Friday, October 26th, 2012, from 4:00 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. for the east side of High Street to the west side of Charles Street in the first block of Nark and South Jackson Street and the Nark and South Charles Street for the city's annual downtown Halloween trick-or-treat event to be held from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. I know it seems early, but we want to get it on the calendar. Motion by Alderman Heisler, second by Alderman Meyer. Any discussion? All in favor of...
Do we have police presence at the...
Yeah, we usually have some police officers present.
Do we build Main Street?
No, this is a city-sponsored event. This is our event. And it's minimum and, uh, but we absorb that into the overtime of this is a city-sponsored event.
Do you have any idea of, you know, the cost of hours?
I don't have it, but I've probably, really, really looked at it in the past. It's pretty, that particular one's pretty minimal, but we do have, because a lot of cops, some of the police officers, they actually volunteer stand, um, down there. They cook hot dogs like many of us do and they, um, there's a lot of them who are often volunteering their time as well. So this one works out very nice, but there are a few on overtime, a few were called in for, you know, they've been working out, so, but this is our event. We have a motion, a second to approve this and get it on the calendar. All in favor of this motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Uh, motion to approve the closing of State Route 159 from Main Street to Washington Street and the first blocks of East Main Street and, and West Main Street from 8:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. on Sunday, November 11th, 2012 for the city's National Veterans Day Ceremony to be held at 11:00 a.m. at the Public Square. Do I hear a motion? Motion by Alderman Meyer, second by Alderman Heisler. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the request of closing Streets for Veterans Day, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Uh, Alderman Seibert.
Yes, Your Honor, I have five of them here. They've all just moved by the committee, I can read them all and have roll calls one.
Is there any objection? Proceed.
Consider approval for RJN Grouping to continue to provide selling services for M&amp;S towards our order permit, $1,500 TIP funds. 9618 West Main, ground floor U-Carden. Consider approval for a ground floor U-Carden for 9618 West Main Street for geotechnology. Streetlight at McKinsey and Adams, approval for the installation of light on existing poles and go-up front costs, approximate minimum cost $6,090. The streetlight at 909 South Charles Street, approval for the installation of light on existing poles, no up-front cost. Project Streetlight 612 East Adams, approval for the installation of light on existing poles, no up-front cost, approximate minimum cost $6,900.
Motion Alderman Seibert, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Martinson, do I hear discussion?
Yes.
Okay, uh, you can go first and then I'll open for her next.
I have number four, the streetlight on Nark Charles, we've promised that we will replace the two existing lights with orange bulbs, getting, you will not have to put us up to the street like that, just a happy amber change for both. That's just about $2, $2.50.
Okay. Duly noted by the committee, Mr. Seibert. Okay, duly noted, okay. Anybody else? So with that, with that, with that adjustment, um, I ask for a roll call, both of these recommendations for streets and roads.
Heisler.
Aye.
Consoa.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Regowitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Holt.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Rogerswood.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
Markinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Harlow.
Aye. Motion carries. Alderman Anderson.
Yes, your honor, on behalf of the Mass Assessor Committee, I have two motions and no objection, I can read them through.
Proceed.
A motion to approve Brick Partnership LLC for Engineering Services to remove and replace the boiler at the wastewater treatment plant, and a motion to hire an additional full-time operating engineer at the wastewater treatment plant.
Do I hear a motion by Alderman Anderson, second by Alderman Hayden. Discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Concella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Rogerswood.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
Markinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Harlow.
Aye. Motion carries. Mr. Turner, Communications. Oh, I'm sorry. Motion to approve the low bid for the Huff Park Pavilion, reference roof from Lakeside Roofing in the amount of nine thousand nine hundred eighty-nine dollars with no sentence. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Alderman Elmore, second by Alderman Meyer. Discussion?
I assume this is in the budget, and what was the budget now?
It was budgeted in the TIF budget, it was actually budgeted before that.
For twelve thousand.
It was budgeted for twelve.
And that's...
TIF three. Correct, Jamie? We have a motion and a second, roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Concella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Rogerswood.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
Markinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Harlow.
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Turner, Communications.
There are three requests, if there's no objection, I'll read them as through. There are none. Communication from National Alliance of Southwest Illinois requesting permission to hold the walk on Saturday, June 9, 2012, from 10:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m., using the Black Trail, beginning at Huff Park. They've already received permission from Parks and Rec Department, and they do not anticipate the need for police assistance, and understand that there would be a need if it became necessary to have police. B, Communication from Gregory Bell, Bill Chamber of Commerce requesting permission to hold the 29th Annual Chili Cook-Off on Friday, October 5, 2012, through Saturday, October 6, 2012. They're requesting the closure of the Public Square from 5:00 p.m. Thursday, October 4, until midnight on Sunday, October 7, 2012. They're also requesting the closure of the first three blocks of East Main Street and Jackson Street from Washington to Hay Street, and a police officer at High Street for pedestrian traffic during the entire event. They're also requesting the use of banner pole on West and East Main Streets to hang Chili Cook-Off banners to promote the event, beginning on August 15, 2012. And C, Communication from Hostages of Southern Illinois requesting permission to hold the second annual Dashing for Compaction, a 5K run walk with Magnus files on Saturday, November 3, 2012, beginning at 9:00 a.m. They're requesting the use of Bell West Parkway and Frank Scott Parkway as part of their race path, which will start and end at Wagner GMC, and to have Bell West Parkway close off to traffic just after the second entrance to Wagner Buick through Frank Scott Parkway from 8:00 a.m. until 9:45 a.m. for safety of guests. They're also requesting the assistance of a patrolman or appointed officer to stop traffic at Frank Scott Parkway for guests to cross or race walk from 8:15 to the end of the walk.
I hear a motion, reference these three requests. Some of it, motion by Alderman Heisler, second by Alderman Heisler. Discussion?
So, what do we charge the Chili Cook-Off?
Chili Cook-Off is working, has been working towards paying eighty percent. I think last year, we got a check for almost eleven thousand dollars.
Ten thousand five hundred.
Ten thousand five hundred. You know, we're working towards eighty percent of what they, what they're per, but we are a part sponsor of the Chili Cook-Off, the city is.
Okay. You know, because on, on A, it's a standard to mediately. I assume that implies that, but it doesn't actually say that thing, Chili Cook-Off?
Chili Cook-Off knows, they know. They've paid this amount the last three years, I believe, right, maybe at least, three or four. Because I think, I have to go back, when I think I first started charging these bigger groups, and explaining to them that we have to recoup some of this cost, probably four years ago now.
Okay.
Which was never done before.
I, I understand. But because of what happened with the protest that I was in the other night, and explaining, they have overtime budgeting, and they don't know what the amount is going to be, it's part of the process as we talk about these fees, so these groups can know upfront what their cost will be, rather than they pay a certain amount that they don't know what they're...
It's something that we can talk about in committee, if we want to establish eighty percent based on the previous year's actual. You understand, like I told the groups, I will not tell the police chief, if, you know, I'll give you an example. Couple of years ago, we had a situation where we had an event, and we had another protest about the same weekend, this is several years ago. I wasn't going to tell the police chief how many, you know, he had to stick to a certain amount, he said he needed extra amount of extra men, that was his, so we had some extra overtime there. We had to go back and talk with the group, and as it turned out, we, you know, we raised their fee a little bit, but we ended up absorbing some of that, because they couldn't help that there was a protest two blocks away the same weekend. And to, so when it comes to safety, the police department, the police chief has the call, and that's why, just like last year, a couple of other events, he chose to stay up a little heavier, because of some intelligence that we might have, you know, a few, you know, fights or something that was talked about, and he has to make those judgments, I have to respect that. We are trying to be, be physically responsible and recoup a reasonable amount of this money, which I will say again, up until just a couple of years ago, we didn't recoup any money for these events. So, we are getting a fair amount now, we're working towards the policy that, you know, we have been putting in pace slowly, working with these groups, and that we didn't cause them to, you know, discontinue their programs, because I believe the programs all have value for our downtown businesses, bringing more people downtown, discovering businesses, discovering restaurants, you know, and bringing a whole new synergy to our downtown street scheme. So, there's a trade-off, but yes, you know, we will have to take a look at some, you know, maybe some better ways to fund the interest.
Right, all right, where do you go, Harley, the police chief is the professional who...
He has to make that, they have to make, his staff and the staff have to make that determination.
Right, I mean, we've done, and they've taken, well, and why do you just have to be across at my event, and that's not at all...
That's not acceptable.
I agree, I agree.
We're responsible to the police chief, and the administration is responsible for the process.
Right.
And so, we will, we will make those determinations.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion to approve these three events. We have a second, correct, Mrs. Walson?
Yes.
All in favor of approving these three events, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Petitions we have, non-resolutions, I'd ask for a motion to read by title only, Resolution 3082 and 3083. Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Heisler, to read those two resolutions by title only, and as a group, is that okay? And as a group. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries.
Resolution number 3082, a resolution requesting permission from I-DOT to close the Public Square from 12:00 until May 17, 2012, until 11:00 p.m., May 20, 2012, or the Hartland Square weekend. And Resolution number 3083, a resolution requesting permission from I-DOT to close Route 159 and Public Square from 7:30 until 10:30 p.m. June 1, 2012, for the Ionides, Ryans, and Turkish Parade.
Motion to approve Resolution number 3082 and 3083, Southern...
The motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Heisler, approve those two resolutions I've just read. Discussion?
I noticed that you've gotten here at the expense of the City of Belleville, as the Department of...
On which one?
Resolution 3083, Cameron.
And it is, it's in our recommendation that we have not charged the Shriners Parade in a hundred years? I can't find any evidence that we've ever charged a Shriners Parade.
It is material, and this is a new day, just like you said, we need to charge...
That is the recommendation, you can vote against it. You want, you want to vote separately?
This is the point, where we directed specifically that this go to committee, and you are now bringing this around into that door.
It's not, it's not in front of everybody, you, you, hold on, hold. We have it here proposed that we approve the Shriners Parade request.
You are picking and choosing, that's what your objective to, you're picking favorites. Period.
No, there's no favorite. I told you...
We charge one group, and we don't charge another, that's picking favorites.
This has been a, this has been an event that the City of Belleville has recognized and supported for a hundred years. This has been a hundred year tradition. We have, no one has ever charged Shriners for the police protection in this parade, never. And, and we're, we're asking tonight that the same proposal come forward. If you choose to vote against it, if you choose to bring something else back to committee, but, but it's here tonight in this fashion. We have a, we have a motion and a second?
Mr. Meyer? Well, at the last financing, we just notated that we do have on the next finance agenda, so...
It is.
It is on the next committee meeting.
And quite honestly, I didn't know that the Shriners had this on here, I didn't know that that, that request was in the Mrs. Fields' office at the exact same time that we discussed. They come in, as you can see, some of the events come in almost a year ahead of time, because they want to get on their calendars, you know, like I said, it's here tonight, this is not uncommon, and the Shriners Parade will be here, you know, pretty quickly, actually we're probably about four or five months away, is what I'm saying.
It's scheduled in the next finance committee to discuss this particular issue, specifically parades and festival fees and charges.
Can we pause upon these resolutions until it has been discussed with the committee? There's more than enough time for them to get... I would propose that we set aside a date, so that that's not a problem, but that we resist putting in that we're not charging them until it's been discussed.
We have a motion and a second to approve these two resolutions, correct?
Correct.
Okay, you can vote against that, and if you have it, you know, okay?
The finance committee wants to bring a new resolution to the City Council next month, they certainly can't...
That's fine, that's great, time to do that, if they, if they still do that. Roll call.
Is this on both of them?
Both of them.
Okay. Heisler.
Aye.
Concella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Rogerswood.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
Markinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
I had my hand up, can you start?
I didn't, I didn't recognize it, you...
So, I have to vote?
Your vote, yes, ma'am.
Present.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Harlow.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Uh, we go on to ordinancees, ask for a motion to read by title only, ordinance number 7574. Motion by Alderman Sillsby, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Heisler. All in favor of reading ordinance number 7574 by title only, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries.
Ordinance number 7574.
Motion to approve ordinance number 7574. Motion by Alderman Sillsby, to approve, second by Alderman Heisler. Discussion on the ordinance, that's just been a motion and a second. Roll call. Do you have a discussion point, Alderman Seibert?
No, I can, I have my hand up.
Who's second, though?
I'll recognize Alderman Snyder as the second, that's my objection. Um, we have a motion and a second, roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Concella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Rogerswood.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
Markinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Harlow.
Motion carries. Uh, we go on to ordinancees, ask for a motion to read by title only, ordinance number 7574. Motion by Alderman Sillsby, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Heisler. All in favor of reading ordinance number 7574 by title only, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries.
Ordinance number 7574, a groundwater use ordinance for ninety-six eighteen West Main Street, Neo-Technology.
Motion to approve ordinance number 7574. Motion by Alderman Sillsby, to approve, second by Alderman Heisler. Discussion on the ordinance, that's just been a motion and a second. Roll call. Do you have a discussion point, Alderman Seibert?
No, I can, I have my hand up.
Who's second, though?
I'll recognize Alderman Snyder as the second, that's my objection. Um, we have a motion and a second, roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Concella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Rogerswood.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
Markinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Harlow.
Motion carries. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Motion by Alderman Meyer, second by Alderman Anderson, all in favor of adjournments, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries.